Promise to be in order, please rise from the platform and reach the same invitation following.
I make a motion to the flag of the United States of America. Consider Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Allen?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Before?
Here.
Ms. Stravich?
Here.
Ryan Dahl?
Here.
Ricks?
Warren?
Here.
Good to see everybody's here tonight and healthy. Approval of minutes for the city council meeting of September 5th. Motion be in order.
Motion?
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Be you not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Moving on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. Gentlemen, you're here for the audit tonight. You're good, right?
Don't want to talk any extra?
Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? Be you not, a motion accept the agenda as presented would be in order.
Motion?
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Any discussion? Be you not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. There is no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Moving on to items for consideration. We have six this evening. The first one being consideration of audit presentation. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to receive a presentation from the city auditors Plant Moran for the fiscal year 2016-17 audit. The presentation will again mention that in spite of financial challenges faced by many communities, we are maintaining a solid position. And Keith Shumansky and Dave Harrington are here tonight to make the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Big crowd here, so.
Big crowd.
That's always a good sign. That must mean things are running smoothly, and that's why we're really going to be here to present just what the city manager mentioned, that the financial condition of the city is in solid condition. We're going to give the results of the audit on June 30th, 2017, for the city of Richmond, and Dave Harrington and Keith Shumansky. Couple observations. One, we're here in the middle of September for a June 30th year end. That is really impressive. You know, so it's not easy yet. Regardless of size of community, most audits don't get closed as quickly as the city of Richmond, and seldom are we able to present as timely as we do here. So that's a real testament to making your record-keeping, your accounting, treasury functions a priority. So that's probably the best indication of taking it seriously. The results of the audit are the best opinion you can get from your auditors, which is a non-modified opinion. Fancy term for you can rely on these numbers, and you should use them going forward as a good base for this 17-18 fiscal year we're in, for your budgeting process. And just looking at your finances as we did the audit, that as you're making consideration on items over the year, throughout the year, you can really rely on the numbers that you're getting from your department and from your city manager. So that's, again, has to be reassuring in the position you're in, because a lot of money comes in and goes out, and you want to use it in the best of public trust. So in lieu of going through all 42 pages, which Keith, we want to see Monday night football, so Keith's going to go through the handout, and feel free to ask any questions throughout the presentation or at the end. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Got just a few slides to go through to present the financial statement highlights for the last year, beginning with a few focused just on the general fund. Slide number one is a five-year history of general fund revenues. They rose slightly again in 2016, but only by a very small amount, less than 1%. As is common with most local units of government, property taxes are by far the largest revenue source. They make up about 64% of the total general fund revenues. And as is common as well, state shared revenue is your second largest revenue source. The good news is, is that after several years of declining taxable values and some flat years, 2015, or 2016-17 was the second straight year of a taxable value increase, albeit a moderate one. The reason the property tax revenue actually decreased slightly in terms of the dollars is that the city reduced its reliance on the revenue sharing agreement with the TIFA. So that went down by about $50,000. The decrease in property tax revenue was about $28,000. So the increase on the true operating mileage more than offset, or partially offset, the decrease in the TIFA revenue sharing agreement. As the economy has slowly grown through the years, the city has received small increases in some of its other revenue sources. We can see increases in state shared revenue and permit revenue over the last couple of years. Moving on to slide number two and looking at the expenditures, the good news here is that while the revenue has increased slightly, the expenditures were actually down about 2% compared to the prior year, and that spread was, that decrease was spread across most of the categories. Again, as is common with local units of government, your largest category of expenditures is public safety. So the general fund spends about 45% of all expenditures on police and fire. On the third slide, we basically put those two results together and showed the net impact on the fund balance, which was an increase for the year. In fact, it was an increase of about $376,000. So took total fund balance in the general fund from about $1.4 million to over $1.8 million. And almost all of that is classified as unassigned in the financial statements, meaning it's available for any form of operations the city chooses to use it for, should they need to dip into the fund balance. And if we look ahead to the 2018 budget, should it be necessary, there is just a budgeted use of about $60,000 for 2018. Switching gears away from the general fund and looking briefly at the water and sewer funds, we're showing two measures here over the last five years for those two funds. One is working capital, which is a calculation of the current assets in the fund minus the current liabilities, which essentially tells you what resources they have available for operations at the end of the year. And the other being operating income, which is a function of operating results, the user fees, minus the cost of operations, which includes depreciation on the fixed assets. So if you were to look at the sewer fund, they had a very small operating loss during the year of about $53,000. That's including $380,000 for depreciation on the fixed assets. So the true cash spending was much less than that operating loss, and in fact was a positive. But you'll see working capital in the sewer fund did increase. The water fund was actually opposite results. It had positive operating income, but a slight decrease in working capital. But really, the takeaway from these slides should be that the working capital and the net position available in these funds is more than sufficient to support the operations of the funds going forward. And in fact, both of them have supported operations as well as any capital improvements needed in recent years without having to take on any long-term debt, and they still remain very well positioned going forward. Are there any questions on anything we covered here in the summary or the financial statements themselves?
We're following you.
Again, happy to take any questions, and we are very thankful of the opportunity to serve the city and your finance department, the treasury services, city manager, water and sewer DPW. Just well-run, very, you know, you should feel great about where you are. You're solid financially. And you've done a lot of the smart things, short-term and long-term. Continue that same fiscal responsibility. You should be fine going forward. So a model for what you want to see in government as far as that tight rope of serving the community and doing the best you can with the dollars and being fiscally responsible long-term. So, well done.
Very good.
Awesome.
It's good to hear. Any questions of Dave or Keith? Well, we appreciate all your work again.
Thank you.
We appreciate our administration, the great job they've done. Definitely Angel, thank you again, the day-to-day operator. You keep your hands off her, David.
This is a job my staff love to come out here, because things work. So we're not going to mess up that formula.
Good. Angel worked for his company for a while there and helped us when we were looking for a new treasurer. We asked him, the city manager asked him to come in and look at our various applications, because we were kind of stumped, and Angel put a application in. He, his comment was, if he would have known before we did that she was ready to come back to work, he would have
Yes.
brought her back into Plant Moran, so.
We do have a no poaching rule for our clients.
Very good. We appreciate that. And we appreciate what she has done for us. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Lions, right? Okay. Is there any other discussion necessary? If not, a motion would be in order.
I make a motion to receive and file the city of Richmond, June 30th, 2017 financial report with supplemental information from Plant Moran LLP.
Support.
It's been made and supported. Any discussion? It's all been said by our auditors. You did a great job again. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Item number two is consideration request to sell Goodfellow papers by the Richmond Lions Club. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider the request from the Richmond Lions Club to conduct their annual Goodfellow paper sale on Friday, December 1st, and Saturday, December 2nd. The Lions Club is requesting permission from council to conduct it at Main and Division and County Line Road and St. Clair Highway. Administration's only recommendation is that on Friday, December...I'm sorry, did I say?
Yeah, Friday, December 5th.
Okay. Sorry, the paragraph above has the wrong dates. I'm just checking to make sure it's, it should be the first and the second. That is their request. So the motion will need to be changed to Friday, December 1st. On the second part of the motion. But anyway, that they'd not solicit in the intersection from 2:30 to 3:30 due to school traffic.
On the same motion there, the County Line and St. Clair Highway, that would only be in the city of Richmond, because that intersection is also Casco Township. So could we so note that in the motion in the city? So there's no, I don't want to take anything away from Casco Township as far as the authority out there. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request received from the Richmond Lions Club to conduct their Goodfellow paper sale at the intersection of Main Division and County Line-St. Clair Highway, city of Richmond portion of it, December 1st and Saturday, December 2nd, 2017, from dusk till dawn, dawn to dusk, actually. Further, Lions Club agreed not to be in Main-Division intersection on Friday, the 1st, from 2:30 to 3:30, and any further, that the Lions agreed to sign a liability waiver.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Any further discussion? Again, it's nice that the state has come up with the law that allows this, after everything that we went through, following the Attorney General's opinion. So it's nice to see him back out on the corners again. Any other comments? Be you not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number three is consideration request to close M-19 to conduct the annual homecoming parade, Richmond High School. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider the request from Richmond High School to conduct the annual homecoming parade on Friday, October 13th, beginning at 5:00 PM. Once again, the parade will line up on Festival Drive and BB Park, and then continue onto Washington Street to Main, travel south on Main to Division Road.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request from the Richmond High School to conduct the annual homecoming parade and direct the city clerk to apply to MDOT for permission to close M-19 from 5:00 to 6:00 PM on Friday, October 13th, 2017, to conduct the annual homecoming parade.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Discussion? And that is to close both traffic lanes.
Both directions.
Yep. Glad to see that they're doing it again. Longtime tradition in our community. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. And number four is consideration of adopting 2018 city council regular meeting schedule. Mr. City Manager?
In order to comply with the requirements of the Open Meetings Act, council must establish the schedule of council meetings for the upcoming year. In your background brief here, you have all of the dates for the first and third Mondays, with the exception of, I think it's Labor Day and New Year's will be switched. And then also, the motion will move the July and August dates, or times, to 6:00 PM.
There is a discrepancy here. On our city calendar, it calls for the January meeting to be the 3rd, which is a Wednesday. If I was looking at it right, maybe I was looking at the wrong thing. Yeah. The January 18th meeting, on our present calendar, calls for the city council meeting to be on the 3rd. It also says that the 1st being on a Monday, that we're closed on the 2nd. Is that correct?
You're correct. Because of the way the holidays fall, it pushes it both to Monday and Tuesday. I'm sorry, that is.
So should we, we should go the 3rd Monday?
The 3rd, yes.
Okay. So the January 2nd turns into a 3rd.
Yep.
I'm just looking, because I'm going to be retiring. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. Anything, any other discussion on any of those dates? Okay. Motion be in order.
I make a motion to adopt the 2018 city council meeting schedule as presented. Further, the start time for the meetings in July and August will be 6:00 PM.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Any discussion?
I was going to ask for it to be moved to the 3rd anyways, because of that, so.
I was just wondering, because we always have to talk about our quarterly. It's this calendar that you gave us, kind of just all those months that we have our quarterly, January, April, July, October, all lined up. Every one of them has a 5th Monday. Or do we want to take a look at one of the shorter meetings that we would stick with the Monday nights? My question is, did you want, we, just recently, we've been going after city council meetings to have the quarterly. If that's working, fine. Otherwise, every one of those months have a 5th Monday. That's what we used to do, is try to go that 5th Monday, because we're kind of geared that way. And I was going to offer a motion to move that direction. But if council thinks that the quarterly workshops after the regular meetings works for you, I'm all about it. It's one less, four less meetings that we have to go to in the, in the year.
I like it after meetings.
Pardon me?
I like it after the meetings.
Okay.
But at the same time, we don't have to plan it a year ahead, because sometimes it'll work and sometimes it doesn't work.
Yes, yeah.
So sometimes that 5th Monday is nice to have.
I think the administration tries to have short agendas, you know, those, those months, so that we, you know.
If we can do a short agenda, that's fine. But if not, I'd rather have that 5th Monday, so we could spend a little extra time, as opposed to trying to hurry it out, getting late in the night, or whatever, what it is time-wise. Yeah, it's great not having that extra meeting tacked on to their schedule, but I don't want to push, rush something through just for the sake of time.
Right.
If we do have that extra Monday available to us. So if we can work it out where our agendas fit both meetings, I'm, first priority, but if we can't, let's leave that as an option.
What do you think, Johnny? You think that's kind of?
I'm fine with kind of leaving it. It seems to have worked, especially in the summer, like that July quarterly. It works real well, because we start an hour earlier.
Yeah.
You know, I think looking at October, we can probably make one of them shorter, depending on if we put the October quarterly on, on one of those meetings. As Rob said, if we know we have a lot of stuff, or it just doesn't work, that there's a lot on the quarterly and the regular meeting, then you look to move it, you know, and I think the flexibility there probably. It's hard to predict in the future.
Right.
You know.
Yep.
So administration's fine either way. I think it seemed to have worked best for council. Everyone's schedules are so hectic that when we went to having them after the meetings, it just cleared up a lot of
Yeah.
work trying to find that.
Absolutely. It's nice to have that 5th Monday off, too, after all these years. Mike, were you going to say something?
I was just going to say, well, if you remember during our budget workshops, we actually started like 5:00, 5:30. So maybe that's an option, too, that we could go to the work, the quarterly workshop, and then stop 10 minutes before council meeting, and then after the council meeting, you'll go back.
I'd be good with that.
Yeah.
That's true.
I think pretty much all of us are available at least by 5:30. I could be here 5:00. I don't know. Dennis, I think it's on.
If we have a longer agenda, we could adjust the starting time.
Yeah.
Accordingly, at the, at the previous meeting. So, okay, well, then let's just leave it the way it is. I just wanted to bring it up at this time, since we are scheduling our whole year out. Okay, so any more discussion on the motion? Be you not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. I just lost my agenda here. It got covered up. Anyhow, I'm pretty sure it's going to be on the quarterly roundtable meeting.
Yes, is that right?
Okay, John, go ahead.
Council's being asked to schedule this. Next quarterly roundtable meeting for October are two regular meetings, our October 2nd and 16th.
Okay. Would the 16th work better? Would council, I'm not going to assume anything. Council relax rules for now before a motion is made for a discussion? Okay. Would the 16th be better for the administration?
It would be better for administration.
The 16th does not work for myself and for council.
Okay. You guys are not going to make the meeting?
Well, we're going to be there, but it's because of how our schedule is that day, it would be hard to fit a quarterly roundtable meeting before or after a regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay.
I'm actually flying in from Philadelphia that day, then, early afternoon. Now, if there's any problems, I may miss it.
Administration can make the second work, if there's not another Monday that works.
Maybe we go to the, maybe we do go to the 5th Monday.
Well, you're talking two weeks from tonight.
Yeah, that's going to be, that's going to be tough.
About the 5th Monday, the 30th. Well, that's the night before Halloween, and if everything works out, we're going to be kind of busy maybe that night before, trying to get things ready.
23rd?
23rd? 23rd? Around the table?
It's mine.
Monday, yeah.
23rd, okay.
23rd, okay.
Yeah, work, 23rd?
Yes, that'd work for us, yes.
Okay. And what time would you think that we can start on the 23rd?
5:30?
5:30?
5:30?
5:30, good?
Uh-huh.
Okay. All right. Are we all done with our discussion, then?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to schedule a special quarterly roundtable meeting with the city council, October 23rd, 2017, at the city hall, beginning at 5:30.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Is there any further discussion? Be you not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Okay, the last item is consideration of bid award for a masonry wall. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider awarding the 2017 DPW masonry fencing project. Administration had requested a discussion at the last meeting and got a lot of good input from the council. Based on the input and some of the questions and concerns raised about the durability of some of the alternates that we were looking at, as well as kind of the foundation mechanism, or lack of foundation that the two alternate screening walls have. We kind of rethought and looked at those two alternates with kind of a fresh perspective, and also we met with the city engineer, and based on his review and Jim's looking at kind of what we think concrete prices are going to do in the future. We're kind of back to thinking that the traditional masonry wall best meets the kind of longevity that we're looking for, as well as the aesthetics. The bids for these, for the wall expire September 29th, so if we don't award the bid, we're going to have to rebid this project. More than likely, those concrete prices will go up. Jim did take a trip out to Royal Oak. Certainly, the nicer wall does look a little bit nicer, but there was undermining of the wall sections due to the lack of foundation. And the one that was kind of the more lesser expensive wall had certainly cracking and things like that. So based on his review and based on the questions that council came up with in, at that September, I think it was our 5th, September 5th meeting, we're kind of back to recommending award of the bid. The one thing we missed, and you'll see it in the photo that we provided at the back of your packet, this has the base bid cap. You'll notice on the right-hand side of that photo, there's a masonry, kind of a vertical pier there. You see that? We had omitted that on our bid specs. So looking at the city ordinance, the requirements of the city ordinance, we are required to do a couple of those on the wall. So we're proposing at the corners and then two on Stone Street. And so with that, you'll notice that the bids on the background brief, we went to the two low bidders and got a price on the six masonry piers. And that makes the base bid for the masonry cap the low bid, which is from M.L. Shaner. And Jim is here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I make a motion to award the 2017 DPW masonry fencing project to M.L. Shaner in the amount of $120,590, with the expense charged to the appropriate items within the general fund, DPW, local street, major street, water, sewer, and TIFA funds.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Any discussion? As the city manager said, we had a lot of discussion on this. We've got a couple of weeks to think about this.
I have a question. So though, just for clarification, the $1,640 was to put that post in? So that was to put six posts in?
Correct.
Okay. Which will be two on?
The four corners.
Okay.
And then two additional ones, the length of Stone Street, because it's such a long stretch there along Stone.
Would it be prudent to put another, like, a few more in, just for?
Both Troy and Jim looked at that and felt this was the right number, but I'll defer to Jim.
Yeah, the wall's, that, that length is approximately 350 feet, and the city's ordinances are every 100 feet, excuse me, for the piers, so that's as close as we could get to that. And we could add one more. We'd be less than 100-foot spacing if we keep the way we're at. We're slightly more than 100-foot spacing.
What is the purpose of the pier?
It's really aesthetics is the purpose of the pier.
I guess if, my question here would be if we're requiring our residents to comply with that ordinance, why would we stretch it for ourselves?
This, I don't, I don't believe we're stretching it. Like, it's 100-foot is a, an approximation, or kind of a goal, but there's, there's no real value one way or the other. I mean, if it's significantly less, then certainly there's aesthetic values less, but 100-foot is kind of a random number. So to add, add another pier to, for the sake of being less than 100-foot spacing, I don't believe that being more than 100-foot puts us out of the ordinance in any way. The planning commission did approve that the way we proposed it.
And with the quality of the split face block that we're using, I still think aesthetically, we're meeting the intent of the ordinance, and that's what the planning commission felt as well.
And just so we're clear, because there was a lot of discussion, the base bid and the alternate bid, the base bid is for the masonry wall, and the alternate was for?
If you turn to that last.
Right, I just, for the public.
Yes, it's for the masonry wall with an actual masonry cap versus a metal cap at the top, yep.
And, yeah, my motion was for the masonry, not for the?
Right. There was just, given last meeting and all that, a lot of discussion.
That's true.
What type of wall, and the bids were that, were within a couple hundred dollars. I just wanted, so we're, the public knows, too, that we, which we're, what we're doing and what we're going with.
So the wall itself is going to be following So, the wall itself is going to be following the fence line. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Where, where is the salt barn going to be?
The proposed salt barn, so it would be in the northwest corner of our property, which would be the corners of water and Stone Street.
Okay.
And where currently, it's on the east property line, property line.
Okay.
That, that's what's proposed. It certainly hasn't gone to planning yet or city council.
Yeah, okay. Well, I guess it's somewhat pertinent because one of the, one of the reasons we want to put the wall in besides this aesthetic value for the neighborhood is the fact that it's going to knock that noise down since we're moving it over that direction. I just was looking at it. I, I'm not quite sure, were you going to come from the south and, and have a, a road or whatever coming around to that?
Yeah, currently, where the entrances are now at DPW, the trucks come along the front of the building, the east side of the property line when they come in.
Yep.
Whereas we would be able to push that to the backside or the west side of our property where it's a lot easier for semis. I mean, it's really tough turns now, so it'd make our, much easier for deliveries for salt and sand and stone, as well as just utilizing our yard in general by putting the road along that west property, property line.
So, just driving by today, taking another look at, so is there going to be a cul-de-sac?
It'll, it'll be able to loop through our yard and use the, the entrances would remain where they are in the long term. They would still be there. We just have a road, if you will, that circles behind.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Be you not? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass.
Thank you.
Okay. City manager's comments?
Just want to thank everyone that came out and helped with the Romeo to Richmond half marathon and the five K and the super mile. We had a lot of local residents and groups, Lions Club, and the Richmond Good Old Days Festival helped with the five K shutdown. And I know it's a quick turnaround from one weekend to the next, so I really appreciate everyone that came out and helped with that event. And then just, everyone's probably seen or noticed that the house demo projects are almost wrapping up. Both structures are at least on the ground. I think the one on Division Road has actually been backfilled now. And the one on Main Street, I believe Jim mentioned tonight that it's all down in the basement, but should be getting out this week.
Yeah, very good, very good.
Very good.
Very good. Okay, council comments. Dennis?
I just wanted to say how enjoyable the Good Old Days weekend was and, and working with the parade, the comments that I had, the people participating in the parade, and how much they loved the city, how clean the city is, you know, hats off to Jim and his crew maintaining that and John. Organizational wise, they couldn't speak highly enough. And that was not just from one or two, that was from a handful of participants in the parade, that they love coming to the city of Richmond for the event, so. Fun to pass it on.
Very good. Jamie?
I concur. It was a fantastic Good Old Days. And I also have a little EDC update that there, we're working on the webpage, the, the administration is working on the webpage, and EDC is going through that this week at our meeting. And also that we will be voting on some changes to the programs that we have. So, keep an eye out for that.
Very good. Emily?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing.
Rob?
Just quick question. The plans still agree. Are we still going to convert over to mums at some point? To keep that going or are we pulling them off? I don't remember. It's been so long since we've.
We were going to pull them off.
Pull them off.
And then, and then kind of Jim and his crew will salvage the pots.
Perfect.
We're kind of playing it by ear as far as how long the flowers will look good before they kind of look a little.
And I only reason ask because with the, with the, the pole decorating and stuff going on and all, too much was too much, but it's been a while since streetscape and that's like, just to let everybody know. Thanks.
The MDOT crossing work on Main Street, who inspects that work?
They do.
They do themselves.
Yeah, Jim has been out there.
With what's going on because I've heard a couple of people who are cement people who say it may not be a very good job. Is that?
As far as the workmanship, I personally don't have any issues. I've been out there. I mean, I have concerns with the design, you know, complaints from the city's perspective that I, we can't seem to get changed. So, it kind of is what it is in, in one regard. It's frustrating, but I don't think it's detrimental. I, I believe the product will last a while. It just may not be aesthetically what I would have liked to have seen.
Okay.
Jim has been out there as much as he can to fight for what we want. And in some cases, it's been successful. In other cases, they're just kind of, that is what, they're meeting the code. They're being adjusted due to the fact of the micro-surfacing changes, the elevation of the road a little bit. And then some of the ADA ramps either weren't in compliance or need to be changed a little bit on their elevation due to the new level of the road. He's been absolutely trying his best to get them to kind of step up their game, but they're unfortunately kind of, that's what their contract reads is what they're getting.
Along the N-19 project, the, the brick pavers, those all going back in, reusing what we had or, I mean, there seems to be a combination of things going on.
A lot, a lot of the brick paper work that we originally did doesn't match up with the new ADA laws. So, even the more recent ADA ramps that we've installed have less brick pavers than, than what we would like. Having said that, there's, we're stockpiling those brick pavers so that once they're done and out of the way, we may go back in and put what we want, you know.
MDOT wouldn't allow us to put the pavers back in as part of their project.
I've had some people ask me, are we taking them away, you know, so.
We're holding and then we'll, we hope to use them where, where we can, back in there.
So, didn't MDOT approve those pavers in the first place?
Yes, but when they did, the ADA laws didn't read what they do now. And, and the pavers take quite a bit more level of work than flat concrete to make the ADA ramps work.
Okay.
I mean, it can be done and we wanted them to do that.
Yeah, so, but if something goes wrong with that cement or, or whatever, that is billed back to MDOT?
Correct. It's contract, yes.
We still have the maintenance contract and this would be part of that maintenance contract?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And that is billable? That's, we don't have, we get X amount of dollars a year to maintain?
Well, we certainly have a, a certain contract amount, but when it comes to special projects that we've done a few since I've started, they've allowed us to increase it for those contracts, so if something comes up, we certainly can ask and I've been successful for the most part.
So, maybe we buy more pots to cover up for next year?
What's the, I mean, if you don't mind me asking, is there a specific concern that somebody brought up, just so I?
They just said that they, they felt that it wasn't a very good job and that it wasn't matching in very well.
Yeah, and we've had a few discussions and unfortunately, MDOT kind of doesn't play by the same rules as they make us play by in that regard. They wouldn't, they wouldn't change because we, we already asked them that question.
Okay, right. Okay. And again, Dennis spoke to it. We, we got so many compliments this year from so many different people on the festival and the town and the, the people and the businesses and, and everything. It was, it was another great weekend. The weather very odd compared to the weekend before and now what we just experienced this past weekend. My kids were, my grandkids were swimming out in Lake Huron Saturday and Sunday. So, the weather didn't help matters, but still Saturday and Sunday, I don't want to say made up for it, but we had huge crowds on Saturday and Sunday compared to other years. So, the festival will still be around, still come back. And there's some new thoughts, some new blood in the festival. And again, we just want to thank everybody, the city and all its departments and everybody else in the community that help show off our community. And I think they did a great job this year. Appreciate the houses finally being down. We've worked on that for a long time. I think the, the house on Thirty-two Mile Road was a very unsafe condition. Luckily, we worked things out there and at a very low cost, the city was able to have that house tore down. And now the, the house on Main Street, there's already been talk about how historic it was. Well, just about everything in town is somewhat historic and, and I can tell you that building, John and I went through that building just to see the possibilities there, and there weren't any. It had not been maintained very well. We did not want to see it become another rental on Main Street. And I think it's going to be a very positive for our community to have that out of there and, and see what we can do. Go ahead, John. You want to say something?
Sorry. I apologize, but your comments reminded me. I actually just received a phone call this afternoon from a business owner up on North Main who probably kind of started the flowers, you know, kind of showed us what could be done up there. Called to say just how great the community looks, how great, we've looked all summer with the flower pots, also commented us on the demo of that building, that it didn't fit up there in the north business district, and wanted to thank us for all the efforts that the council is doing. And so, I'm, I'm glad you reminded me of that because I just got that phone call earlier today from a resident and business owner that has taken his own time off and to try and make that stretch of Main Street look better. And he was very pleased with the efforts that the city is doing this year.
Very good, very good. That's good to hear. Okay, that's all I have. We go to the calendar very quickly here. Today being the eighteenth of September, we have the EDC meeting this Thursday night, the twenty-first, at seven o'clock here at city hall. Tifa will be meeting on the twenty-seventh at seven o'clock here at city hall. It is also the Richmond Lennox EMS drive-through flu vaccination clinic. At the clinic on Thirty-two Mile Road, it's the new building there. It's a drive-through from eight-thirty in the morning until one-thirty in the afternoon. And it is Wednesday, September twenty-seventh at their brand-new building. Have that and what else do we have here? I think that takes us into October already. October second will be the next regular scheduled city council meeting. Is there anything else that we need to add to the calendar? Be you not, closed session is not to be had this evening. Is there any other business of the city council? Be you not, a motion to adjourn would be in order?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. And go Lions.